Good evening. Welcome to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 19th, 2022. And thank you so much for being here tonight, to our citizens, and also thank you Board of Commissioners. Certainly, I'm going to call this meeting to order, and I would like to start with roll call. We'll start with our District One Commissioner, Henry Mitchell III.
President.
District Two Commissioner and Vice Chairman Kelly Robinson.
Present.
District Three Commissioner Torinia Carthen.
Present.
District Four Commissioner Anne Jones Geider.
Present.
Ramona Jackson Jones, Chairwoman, present. Board of Commissioners, we do have an established quorum. Board of Commissioners, tonight, we have the honor and privilege of having our own Rick Martin, our Communications Director, to render invocation for us. And certainly after the invocation, I ask that everybody still remain standing. Along with the invocation, we'll follow the pledge of allegiance. Thank you so much, Rick Martin. Will everybody please stand?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Robinson, Vice Chair-elect Carthen, Commissioners, and staff. If we may bow our heads, please. Our Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for the day you've given us and the evening to have this meeting, to gather peacefully before our Board of Commissioners. Lord, I ask that you pray and support our Commissioners as they make decisions that impact our lives and impact the government services. Thank you for your continued support and protection of our first responders, our police, our fire, our E-911 operations in service. And as we prepare for this meeting, and as it ends later this evening, we ask that you continue to provide protection and safety for all of us amidst the pandemic. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Director Martin, for rendering our invocation tonight, or this evening. Clerk, did we have anyone sign up for public comment?
No, ma'am, we did not.
Okay, thank you so much. Board of Commissioners, with that being said, we will move right into the approval of our minutes. Board of Commissioners, you have the Commission meeting minutes of July 5th, 2022, the work session minutes of June 30th, 2022, and the executive session minutes of June 30th, 2022. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections that need to be made?
No, ma'am.
Being none, the minutes stand approved. Board of Commissioners, we're going to move right into our resolutions tonight. We have two resolutions, Tab Four and Five. I'll start with Tab number four. Resolution establishing a 30-day moratorium for small-box discount retail stores. And we have our own Phil Schaefer here tonight.
So I have prepared just a couple of slides, Madam Chair, this evening.
Okay.
And thank you for the opportunity to present this. As a result of some of the discussions and staff meetings we've had, the Planning Department would like to propose a small-box discount store moratorium for 30 days. As a little bit of background, we've had a couple of stores come through for zoning approvals over the last couple of years, most recently one on Chapel Hill. And as a result of discussions about the zoning allowing it without any recourse on Chapel Hill, I would remind you that we did see the one out on West Veterans Memorial as a rezoning case some last year approximately, and it went through a full process of rezoning and hearing, and then public comment, and it was approved, and then went through the building process to review it. However, the one on Chapel Hill was a zoning by right. So what we would like to ask for is a 30-day moratorium to prevent any additional stores from coming through while we review the code and the ordinance to see if we can strengthen what we have in terms of our rules. Staff has reviewed a little bit about what was done elsewhere, and so far, several cities and counties have in fact adopted small or very finite moratoriums in order to do exactly what we're asking of you. And as far as going a little bit further, specifically, the purpose is to allow us, the Community Development Department, to study the effects of small-box discount stores and consider revisions to the UDC ordinance designed to protect health, safety, and welfare of the county's residences, businesses. It'll probably help with the city as well. But definition of small-box discount store, this is one of the things we'd like to put into the code, and we will define this as a retail store that is 12,000 square feet or less per, in size, and typically sells a variety of convenience shopping goods at less than $10 per item. And it excludes stores that contain a pharmacy, sell gasoline, or diesel fuel, or primarily sell specialty food items. Time limit for this moratorium is 30 days. It'll expire 11:59 PM on August 19th, 2022. I will share with you that a temporary moratorium is allowed under Georgia law, gives the county an opportunity to study its documents and ordinances. The legal basis is several land use cases. One is the City of Roswell at All V Outdoor Systems, Inc. That's one from 2001. And then the US Supreme Court recognized legitimate use of moratorium in the Tahoe-Sierra Preservation Council versus Tahoe RPA. That's from 2002. I will share with you and the public a map. This was done by the City of Douglasville last year when they imposed their moratorium. It shows all of the locations of the dollar-type stores. The two most recent ones are in yellow, they are on West Veterans, number 22, and on Chapel Hill, number 23. 22, 13780 Veterans, has been built, it's open, I believe, now, and operating. It built itself according to how we reviewed it in the Development Review Committee, and it seems to be operating okay as far as regarding all the code requirements that we imposed on it. Chapel Hill has yet to go through the building permit review process fully, it's still in land disturbance review, but it is zoned for that use. And what we would ask of you is just a small-box discount store code amendment. And what we would share is, we will bring back to you in August, modifications to the text. And that way, we can get with some of the other text amendments that we're going to be doing, maybe it would be an amendment to the table of uses, there might be some other things that we'll include in it. And if it's acceptable to you, Madam Chair, I can read the moratorium, so it's on the record if you wish.
Yes, please read it.
So, "A resolution establishing a 30-day moratorium for small-box discount retail stores. The following is hereby resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Douglas County, Georgia. Whereas the county commissioners, from time to time, review the established ordinances to ensure that its laws preserve the quality of life for citizens while imposing limited and effective regulations on certain commercial uses that impact quality of life. And whereas during the next 30 days, the commissioners intend to study the effects of small-box discount stores on the health, safety, and welfare of the county's residences and businesses. And whereas during the next 30 days, the commissioners intend to consider revisions to the Unified Development Code designed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the county's residents and businesses. And whereas the commissioners must take immediate and responsive action to protect the interests of the county, and it is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the county that no applications be accepted by county staff for a period of 30 days if such applications relate to the establishment of new small-box discount stores or the expansion of currently existing small-box discount stores, including any applications for alcoholic beverage licenses, in case something would come through. Whereas by enactment of this moratorium, the commissioners do not intend to disturb the operation of any small-box discount store that is operating fully on the date of adoption of this moratorium. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Douglas County Commissioners as follows. Number one, the moratorium imposed herein incorporates the findings and statements set forth in the proceeding where as clauses, and such clauses are made a part of this ordinance. Number two, for the purposes of this resolution, small-box discount stores means a retail store that is 12,000 square feet or less in size, which offers for sale a variety of convenience shopping goods, and continuously offers the majority of the items in their inventory for sale at a price less than $10 per item. Small-box discount store does not include stores that contain a pharmacy, sell gasoline or diesel fuel, or primarily sell specialty food items, i.e. meat, seafood, cheese, oils, or vinegars. Number three, for a period of 30 days from the date of adoption of this resolution, notwithstanding any provision of the county code to the contrary, there shall be a complete moratorium on the acceptance of any applications relating to the licensing zoning for variances for building of, expansion of, or development of new small-box discount stores, or the expansion of currently existing small-box discount stores, including any applications for alcoholic beverage license for existing or new such establishment. Number four, for a period of 30 days from the date of this resolution, notwithstanding any provision of the county code to the contrary, no licenses or permits shall be granted or denied concerning the establishment of new small-box discount stores or the expansion of currently existing small-box discount stores, including alcohol licenses for such stores. Number five, new small-box discount stores excludes the completion of any properly-zoned project already in progress and for which development rights have vested, so long as the project is completed without undue delay or expansion. This exclusion applies to the projects on Highway 78 and Chapel Hill Road for which construction permitting is currently in progress. Number six, this moratorium shall expire at 11:59 on Friday, August, at 11:59 PM on Friday, August 19th, 2022, unless shortened or extended by official action of the commissioners. Number seven, the Community Development Department shall study the effects of small-box discount stores on the health, safety, and welfare of the county's residents and businesses, and on the property values, and report to the commissioners. Number eight, nothing in this resolution shall prevent the continued operation of any small-box discount store that is operating lawfully as of the date of enactment of this moratorium. Number nine, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or other portion of this resolution, or its application to any person, entity, or circumstances held by a court of competent jurisdiction, to be unconstitutional or invalid, the remainder of the resolution or application of the provisions to other persons, entities, or circumstances shall not be affected, and pursuant to the requirements established by the Douglas County Code, adopted and effective this 19th day of July, 2022. Apologies for the length.
That's okay, we wanted, we appreciate the thoroughness. Okay, thank you so much. Board of Commissioners, you have any questions for Phil Schaefer? Commissioner Geider, you have the floor.
Hey, Mr. Schaefer, I was just wondering why you included the project on Highway 78 when it's, it was approved last year and is operating, and it's not in progress.
No, no, just to make sure it was covered in case they had a question. I didn't, those are the only two most recent ones that came to us.
Well, it says currently in progress.
Yeah. No, it's open now.
I know it is.
Yeah. I just don't want there to be any confusion as to these most recent two, that those are what are excluded from this resolution.
Okay, I just didn't understand why it was in there, because it's done.
It's open.
It's over, zip.
It's open.
All right, thank you.
You yield back?
I yield back.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right, any other questions for Mr. Schaefer? All right. Board of Commissioners, you have heard the resolution requesting to establish a 30-day moratorium for small-box discount retail stores here in Douglas. Do we have a motion to approve?
Sub moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Board, any discussion?
We have a comment.
Okay. Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, moratoriums should be used very strategically and rarely. We, in my experience, at the time, we used it during Palmer Falls, when we put more into the developer. And it puts me personally in conflict sometimes, because I am definitely pro economic development, pro small business. Everybody has by right to pursue happiness. Our job is to create the atmosphere. I appreciate the effort that's being put forth, Madam Carthen, by sponsoring this. Well, let's just get it right, but let's not, it's not prohibit opportunities. We talk about big business, and we'll enable them all day long and bend over backward and break the bank, but the guy who wants to put $10,000, $15,000, $100,000 into a little small business, we don't want you over here. And I get variety, I respect that. I get it, but I'm always saying like, okay, guys, but are we picking? Are we discriminating on those guys, if you don't like what they represent? I just like to watch us, like, okay, I got it, I'm behind it, but at the same point, like, let's make sure, Phil, when you guys come back, let's be thoughtful, if you're talking about a mile radius, or I don't know, you'll put space, which you'll really look at. I hear the legislation, great legislation, very well-written, I knew you guys would do well, but let's make sure you point, like, we've got to take some action then, though. Let's take action. Like, spawn it, like, the last time we did, it spawned into some real, all right, I want to see what it's going to do now, but at the same point, don't prohibit the spirit of entrepreneurship. So, I yield the floor, Madam Chair, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board, we have a motion, second on the floor. We have a motion and a second. If there's no more discussion, please prepare to cast your electronic votes. Board, we have a 5-0 unanimous vote, and the motion carries. So, thank you. We're going to move on to Tab number five. Tab number five is Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, calling for referendum, imposing a 1% special-purpose local option sales tax, which is a SPOS, as authorized by the state of Georgia, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Presenting our presenter tonight from the Executive Cabinet, who's presenting, is it Roslin? Okay, Roslin Miller, Interim Director of Finance.
Madam Chair.
Do you have a floor question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, yesterday, we'll just facilitate this, we're going to make this real tight, get in and get out. Director Miller, the Board of Commissioners spent time in our work session yesterday, and they came up with a set of opinions and positions, all five of us, and there was an average weighting of how we would do categories and percentages for a SPOS. Did you capture that information?
I did.
You did. To my fellow peers, we also took this into our finance committee thereafter, which Madam Geider, from the Fourth District, who is our vice chair, we unanimously acknowledged through administrative concurrence that we certified that that's what the board said. Did we not do that, Director Miller?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just going to stay there right now for the SPOS. So can you read what that is for the records? Remind everybody, I recognize the board can change their minds, but at the same point, please read what they agreed to yesterday, please.
Okay.
Categories, percentages, and the dollar amount that be affected.
And I do have a slide for summary, so you can, so the first category is public safety. The average weighted percent was 40.80%. The dollar amount, $46,920,000. The next category is transportation. The percentage would be 27.80%. The dollar amount is $31,970,000. The next category is parks and recreation, the library slash library. The percent is 20.40%. The dollar amount is $23,460,000. The next category is facilities slash infrastructure. The percentage is 11%. The dollar amount is $12,650,000, which is a total of $115 million.
Thank you. All right. I won't belabor this to my fellow peers. So that was, we, again, we certified it out of finance, that is what we all said that we wanted to weigh in on, and it's our collective will. Just for the record, in comparison to the current SPOS, because it's my understanding that we are on this topic, we're extending the existing SPOS. So please compare the categories of the last SPOS to this SPOS. Like, for example, for public safety, what do we do in the 2016 SPOS by way of percentage versus this one? Can you do it that way? Can somebody help her if she doesn't know 16?
Yes, if I may confound it.
Take your time.
Okay, thank you.
I promise this will be fast. Anybody, staff, directors, deputies, y'all, come on, y'all should know this. Y'all got her out there. Cover her.
Commissioner, Geider came to my rescue. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, this is the current SPOS. We have transportation, 51%. We have fire, EMS, digital radio system, 32%, and we have parks and recreation, which was 17%.
All right, so three categories, very good.
Yes.
So, in this case, transportation is, in 2016 SPOS, it was 51%.
That is correct.
What is being proposed before this board today, and what they're going to vote on, is to move it to, from 51% to what? Almost a 50% cut, 45 for good math. All right, so that was shrunk. Now, let's compare public safety. We use the word public safety in the 2022 We use the word public safety in the twenty, um, twenty-twenty-two splosh consideration, whereas back in twenty-sixteen splosh, that was passed, we used fire, EMS, and what, nine-one-one?
It was a radio system.
Radio system, thank you. All right, so we went from thirty-two percent?
That is correct.
In sixteen to what?
Um, to public safety, it's going to be forty point eight zero percent.
All right, so forty point eight zero, now this is important distinction. Last time it was totally dedicated to what I want to call fire EMS, non-sheriff. Yeah, you can, you can argue that the radio was a benefit, but nevertheless, that's the distinction. This time, uh, it's a broader category of public safety, which means both fire and the sheriff are in on this. No problem, everybody knows it, I just wanted to say it for the record, guys, we'll keep it moving. All right, last one, parks and rec, can you speak to what sixteen and compare it against?
Um, yeah, parks and recreation currently seventeen percent. What's being proposed is twenty point four zero percent.
All right. Twenty point four zero percent, got it. Say it one more time.
Um, twenty point four zero percent, I'm sorry.
In comparison to the prior was what?
Um, seventeen.
All right, so it grew three points, so put a little bit more into that, all right? And we know the dollar amounts. Again, you only have what you have, only what the public will allow is only what they spend. And so duly noted, all right? Now, the last distinction between twenty-sixteen splosh and the twenty-twenty-two splosh, have a fourth category. Can you speak to what that one was, what we termed it yesterday, and perhaps what's in that by default? What does it mean? Go ahead.
It's facilities slash infrastructure, and it's improvement to facilities.
Okay, all right. I'm going to stop there, Madam Chair. Fellow commissioners, is there anything else you want to add to this topic?
I do.
Okay, Madam Guyer, you have the floor.
Uh, first of all, I don't think the public's been given proper notice on the agenda. It just says that we're going to do a referendum imposing the one percent special option, uh, special purpose local option sales tax, and to authorize the chairman to sign the documents. It doesn't say we're setting the percentages. I think if it had said we were setting the percentages, that more people would maybe be here because they would like to know why. Well, would you pull up your slide again? The way the vote went yesterday, we were just pulling figures out and putting them in there, but Miss, Commissioner Robinson put zero for transportation. And he spent more transportation dollars than any commissioner sitting up here last year and in the past years. I do not understand, but that skewed the, the, the percentages. For someone to put zero for transportation when we did, um, a, a, a survey of the citizens and public safety and trans, and, uh, roads were the top two categories. So how can any commissioner vote zero for transportation? That doesn't make sense. We, we use splash money to make the match for the LMIG program every year. So that means that we couldn't match our LMIG, we'd have to take it out of general fund. So if we had zero dollars there, I think we need to table this until the next, um, uh, to, to the next meeting and give the public more notice and let them see what these percentages are. And I just got this, I had to look at, I had to track, track it down, the project sits on the list. And I noticed, um, Winston concession stand's not on the list. And we're, we're, we've allocated money to do, uh, a whole new concept, to redo the whole park, but that park's not even on the list. So we have not done our homework on this, and we haven't looked at all the projects. And I, I apologize, yesterday, and in my newsletter that I just sent out last night, I said that there was a library for twelve mi, I mean, ten million, when on this list it says twelve million, it's grown two million in the past few weeks. Another thing that I don't understand is the priority in which these projects are on the list. Year one, you've got a new library going in when the one-on-Selman Drive is about to fall apart. We don't, we don't maintain the one, the things we have before we build new ones. Same way with the Winston Top Field up there. It hasn't been maintained all these years and all of a sudden it came up, well, it needs to just be dug up and redone, the whole fund. When we've had the concession stand on that list for, from day one, from day one. But we're not, we should fix what we've got first before we go and build something else. And I just don't think the public has been given proper notice that we were going to set the percentages tonight. I'd like, uh, maybe some input from the public, but they were not given notice. And when I read it, I went to the clerk of the county and I said, well, are we not going to vote, are we voting on percentages tonight or not? Because it doesn't say that on the agenda. We publicized this agenda and it has not been properly done. So, um, I don't think we're ready to set these, um, especially with transportation being one of the top two categories that the public says we need to, that, that's a priority with them. And we're way off, I, I guess, it, did David Corman do this one?
Yes, we, yeah, Terminus, we gathered their data from.
We're way off the recommendation that our consultant came up with, too. But, um, you don't build a new library when your existing libraries are falling apart, you renovate them first. You don't build a new park until you fix the ones that have been neglected for years. So, um, I just think that we're just not ready to do this, we need more discussion about it. We were just throwing figures out there. I don't think you really meant to put zero in transportation, it just doesn't make logic, it, it is not logical to do that. So I would recommend that, I want to make a recommendation that we table this until the next meeting, give the public more notice.
Thank you. Are you finished? You yield back?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Fellow commissioners, allow me to rebuttal. You walked right into that. Thank you.
I figured there was something.
Right. Pay attention, we're doing this tomorrow. So, uh, get ready, Miguel. So why did Commissioner Robinson put zero? No, I'm intentional. I give real thought to what I do, and I'm twenty-four-seven. Please never question my logic. We all are allowed to do what we want to do. I can never be marginalized, you cannot touch my education nor my experience. My job was to do strategic pricing of assets. Please do not do that. But, I'm going to make this easy. The point being is, well, I knew what I was doing. Yes, I advocated for subdivision resurfacing. Aren't my subdivisions being resurfaced? I think he, Call Director confirmed today, I'm straight up first up. I always listen to my citizens. I always advocate for what they want to get done. My parties have not missed, and my, those receipts of my citizens are long. But I'm glad you brought it up. So let's look at this. It's the will of the board. You don't want to talk to me for six months? You don't want to talk to me ever? Y'all want to be busy? My vote don't matter. I told you it was going to matter. But you don't want to talk to me? Okay, let me get out your way? You got this. Now, let me take this full circle, Madam Chair, and I had a transportation committee meeting that you, it was one for the ages. Oh, it goes back and validates that, oh, yes, we did educate the public on everything from splosh and T-splosh for those who are confused about why we put contracts out there. How dare y'all try to suggest that we hadn't educated the public? They're out there with Anawaki right now, live in effect, hello, citizens at Anawaki, had nothing to do with me. Uh-huh. Now, we all live in our own little bubbles and we see the world how we think that we ain't communicating. Back in sixteen, I had them six-town halls. Oh, I was that third row, Tom, we got this, let's roll, categories. Commissioner Robinson, I come to your town, yeah, you, y'all, come on. Please don't confuse this on what effort is, and how you get stuff done, and why things are where they are. This will be the last time we get to do this, and I'm, I'm going to enjoy this moment. So, transportation, so we're in the committee. So Director Miller, can you please bring up transportation? My point was you don't have enough room. You don't have enough room in a splosh to put the sheriff in there. Now, I know what the public said, but I get to weigh in how I want to vote. My word was to that sheriff and I did not bend. Now, I sacrificed for the rest of my peers because they got to step up, not me. I set the tone. I got out here and led. What was leadership? We talked about that day, all those forty-four directors, that we made them go through that leadership academy. We tell them what they need to do, they step up, y'all need to show, y'all, okay, now the five of us need to step up. Y'all going to own this. I didn't have nothing to do with y'all vote. Y'all are grown people, duly elected, uh-uh. Own it. Show these people that you know what you're doing. Putting propaganda out there or why they say that's their, please, own it. All right, so here we are, transportation. Are you ready? I'm buying your time, Director Miller.
Yeah, okay. Yes, the next slide.
Yeah, we gotta keep this moving.
Okay.
But the, the board, y'all going to call it, up or down, we're going to keep moving. My point being is that, guys, you don't have enough room, I'm trying to show you something. But I will respect my peers. I get to stand on my own without, nobody can move me. City, county, whatever, I'm going to do what I'm going to do. I'm not beholden to anybody. I call it. All right, so you ready? We got four categories, Miguel, be on standby just in case you got to help defend this, that we also came up with. This came out of our six-hundred-thousand-dollar VBH contract, with our comprehensive transportation plan. What do you mean, we don't understand what we need to do regarding transportation? You know more than enough. Two billion dollars with a need, you got to put seven seventy-three over twenty years. What? Miguel took the first five years, eighty-four million dollars. He has a list. Staff, we validated that in transportation, we acknowledge, like, yes, this is what it is. So there's four categories for transportation in the guise of a T-splosh to make room at the top. You want to take the sheriff to seventy-five percent? I gave you room, those who are big on crime. Oh, you want more room in parks? Well, I gave y'all room. Don't confuse my intention. Oh, you need facilities, you want performing arts, Madam Chair? Oh, I got you too. Uh-huh. Please don't go there. So let's finish. So now I'm saying, leave that alone, y'all spread that out, y'all need this T-splosh. Let the citizens vote. You're not raising a military. The citizens will determine. Oh, y'all talk mash trash about how well the citizens, citizens, well, let them vote. Don't be cowards. Let them vote. Up or down? They do one, both, or neither. But don't, don't sit here and play like, okay, no, I'm going to let them call it. Look at it, all right, you ready? Let's, let's go. So now we got this T-splosh consideration, and I'm going to tell you why. And you look at the transportation committee, those who don't watch that, and you see the needs of this thing. I mean, they went down the list of projects from, from Lee Road Phase One to, uh, Lee Road Phase Two, Chapel. You have no more money. You, we're done. You're not doing resurfacing next year. We've already pulled it forward. You got to make this cash map. You've already committed what your priorities were to the feds, to Congress. You said that you were shovel-ready, but you're not willing to even move forward and let the citizens de- decide to help you make this happen. All you got these economic development projects that you have committed and signed on the dotted line. You got to deliver, you got to deliver Lee Road to Bomaire, twenty-three million. Uh-huh. Miguel warned you, if you get outside this process, you want to take this out of what? Your fund balance. You're going to burn through this cash so fast, you're talking about in two years, that military going to look you in your face? You're going to get blocked with this decision because y'all are not thinking. Y'all trying to spot somebody else that's just trying to play you while you get to the other side, and this thing going to come down on you. You got all the salary and stuff you trying to take care of, you can't keep spotting out the fund balance, guys. This is too big. Y'all are not paying attention. This will be my last time I ever do this again, because again, I'm going to leave this alone. I'm no longer the vice chair-elect, that this is our transition day. I'm out. I'm going on vacation tomorrow, but you will listen to this. Look what we've set in motion. You have major projects that are in motion. All right, so with that being said, I, I, I need to, not even going to go down that path with the, with the projects because it doesn't matter. I have to stop my entire transportation committee. No. No. You had nothing to bring? No. No, we're not recommending anything to board because, no, I'm going to take this straight to them. Now, guys, y'all got, all y'all projects about to get held up because like, now where are you going? I'm not recommending you come out of the general fund, or if I do, you go on it. Uh-huh, you're going to burn through all your cash. Oh, I appreciate Greg breaking all of them, they're ninety-nine percent. They're potentially seven million dollars, y'all going to eat that out the gate. You have no economic development. Lee Road took economic development. All right, you, you sort of doubled it now, you got some room, but y'all ain't got, you, you got no grants, no matches. You got all this congressional money to really move some things forward. Y'all are talking, but y'all don't know how to deliver. You're not looking at how to execute this. And I'm looking at this like, guys, I'm not talking about the future, I'm talking about what you got on the books. All right, so, please, Roslin, you ready?
Okay, um.
The four categories that, from, from, for the T-splosh, just reading as Miguel had them, just like we did yesterday.
Okay, and I'm, I'm not familiar with the spreadsheet top. I assume this is residential, commercial, resurfacing?
Yeah.
Okay, thirty-five million.
And what's the percentage?
Yeah, um, forty-one point seven percent.
All right.
OP improvement and safety.
Operational improvement and safety.
Okay, twenty-five million, twenty-nine point eight percent.
Yes.
Maintenance, ten million, at eleven point nine percent. Grants and economic development at fourteen million, sixteen point seven percent. A total of eighty-four million.
All right, so Director Valentin, please come down here, give, give her some cover that, I think that's important right now. Thank you, Director Miller. This is important. Eighty-four million dollars is what Miguel put forth. It says, based on the CTP that VBH stated, y'all spent six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars doing, got all that public engagement. Y'all got public engagement on the strategic plan on the parties and strategic parties on transportation. Yes, I'm very clear, it's eighty-four million. I can't do the sheriff and him at the same time. I told y'all, like, no, I got you, Sheriff, we're going to do it this way, though. Because you can't, they can't go exist on the same bucket. They don't seem to give you different funding mechanisms. They said, yeah, we know, we understand, they gave us a splosh, they said, okay, but we got transportation, so expensive. No, they gave you a second one, T-splosh, and a third one, transit. Uh-huh, so Miguel, help explain, so that eighty-four million, think about it, that's less than the one-fifteen that we know we get by a base.
Madam Chair, uh, point of order?
No, I, no.
Point of order?
I, I've got the floor. No.
She has the floor, Commissioner.
I, I have the floor. I've got this, so.
Point of order?
I've got the floor, please.
We're on an agenda item and it's about splash.
No, 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 no. I, I rebuttal because you called it, you opened your mouth, you walked right into it, you should have left alone. All right, so now I'm going to continue because this is going to be a condition of my vote. Pay attention.
I have a voice, too.
Okay, Madam Guyer, you're out of order because I've got the floor.
Just let him finish, so.
You got to let me finish.
We're going to vote.
We're going to move on.
It's not about splash.
Doesn't matter, we're explaining what this is. All right, so go ahead. Director, um, Valentin, please explain.
Yes, Commissioner. The, the first item of residential and commercial resurfacing, uh, the, the comprehensive transportation plan update concluded, based on the needs assessment, that the resurfacing amount that was being allocated on an annual basis would yield resurfacing of the county roads on a forty-year cycle. Forty years is twice, over twice, what the recommendation is for resurfacing asphalt. And so the recommendation was And so, the recommendation was to enhance the commitment to resurfacing by going from about three million a year, which is what is, has been currently or historically been done, to about eight million at the time of the conclusion of the CTP. Now, prices have gone up since that time. But nonetheless, if we were to allocate, if, if there was the capability to augment the splosh from the three million to somewhere between eight and ten million, which is what is costing us this year to do the program, that will result, over a five-year span, would be an enhancement of seven million. That, that gets you your thirty-five million dollar estimate for resurfacing over the five-year of the T-SPOS. Operational and safety improvements. The twenty-five million, and, and that is based on not only the, the projects that we have ongoing, but, uh, the tip projects, the, the larger projects, but also projects remaining in the existing splosh that were not able to be completed because of lack of funding. So, that is the, the twenty-five million, five million a year for that. Maintenance, uh, the, the, one of the elements that goes into that, obviously, is, part of it is equipment, part of it is ongoing maintenance that has to be done to the roads in addition to the resurfacing. There's maintenance of dirt roads or gravel roads as well. And so, the, the recommendation there was at least two million a year to cover that. So, for ten million total over the five years. And then, grants and economic development, the fourteen million estimate was based, again, on matching grants that we either have as a county committed to already in terms of, but when I say committed, we applied for funding and agreed, if the funding was granted, that we would have, the county would have the funds, matching funds to go with that. So, that is the, the fourteen million. So, that totals eighty-four million. Of things that have been identified that are either recommendations of the comprehensive transportation plan or actual agreements that the county has entered into. So, that, that gets you the twenty-four, the eighty-four million. What that yielded was an extraction of what percentage for these four categories does that request represent? And so, based on that, that percentage, if, instead of looking to net eighty-four million, which is only for the existing identified projects or commitments, to have some additional room for things that are coming down the line, other projects, potential infrastructure funding that might be available, to, to have the ability to match that. Those percentages were applied to what a penny tax would yield, or, or sales tax. Let me clarify that. So, so that would be a hundred fifteen million, and that's what yielded these, these figures that, that are on the screen.
Very good. Leave that there, and the last guy's gonna be out, so I'm asking Madam Chair to call a question. Finally, Miguel, today in transportation, let them know for those who weren't here, this is just for my peers. There was a set of things that came forth from your peers, the committee and stuff. Can you articulate what those were and what's at risk, please?
Yes, there were, there were three items that were on the agenda today. One was the Lee Road Phase One project. The design proposal has come in, the project was initially started back in two thousand and two, I believe. And so, the design was paused for a number of variety, variety of reasons. And so, now, we're ready to begin the process again to complete the design, revisit what was done back then, and complete the design, update it, and be able to deliver that project. And there is a, a certain level of funding, federal funding already on that project, but it's very minimal for the preliminary engineering phase. So, we have about four hundred thirty-four thousand, I believe, is the federal amount. And with the local match, it's five thirty-seven thousand. But the amount needed for, for the estimate, well, not the estimate, the proposal that has come in to perform the design is two point four million. And so, we have, I'm sorry, let me, let me just make sure that I'm giving you the more exact number. So, there's a deficit as it relates to that particular project. Okay. It is two point three eight, two million three hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and sixty-two cents, to be more precise, but essentially, two point four million. We also discussed that there, there may be, and I believe the last confirmation that I got was that there might be some funding left over from the two thousand and two splosh that had been allocated to the Stewart Mill and Yancey and Stewart Mill and Reynolds design projects. Those were done concurrently, and so, not all the funding was used for the design, so the, so some of it would go to construction. So, potentially, there's about a hundred forty-nine thousand dollars left available that could be allocated to, to another project. But in this particular case, as it relates to the Lee Road Phase One, we have five hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars between federal and local match, and that was the original Capital Transportation Fund, CTF, which is mostly exhausted now. But, so there is that funding available. And as part of the reforecast, the splosh reforecast that was done last, late last year, there was an allocation from, from the twenty-sixteen splosh of nine hundred and seven thousand three hundred seventy dollars. So, we have available towards the design of that project, the Lee Road Phase One project, one point four seven million. The, the amount that is needed is two point four, so we have a deficit there of nine hundred fifteen thousand dollars and some change. So, that was one of the projects that we discussed at the meeting today. The other project was the Stewart Mill and Reynolds intersection project. That one has been fully designed, we have the permits, we're ready to go to construction. We did get a bids on it and we're ready to move forward, but we are also short on funding. That project, we had an allocation out of the twenty-sixteen splosh of one point seven million for the entirety of the project. That's the PE design permitting, environmental mitigation, all of that. So, the funds remaining after the, the permits and design was completed and right-of-way acquisition is one point, one point three five six million. So, the low bid that came in for that project was two point one two million. Therefore, the deficit in funding is seven hundred sixty-seven thousand hundred and six dollars. I mentioned the two thousand and two splosh that was allocated to these projects that could be utilized if it's the will of the board to, to reallocate it to this project for construction, that was a hundred forty-nine thousand three hundred fifteen. So, the, the deficit in funding for this project is six hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and ninety-six cents. In addition, the, the third project that we discussed at the committee earlier this afternoon was the, the Spine Road design for the TAD area. That project, we, the, the county entered into an agreement to sponsor the Spine Road. Now, this is not the Lee Road extension itself. This is a, the Spine Road, part of the TAD. And the amount of the proposal... Make sure I got the number. Okay.
One point five, please.
Yeah, it's, it's one point four, one point four five million. That is both for the design and the engineering administration during construction.
And give you the last project, you gotta keep going.
That, that was the last project.
Alright, you already talked about transfer station?
Oh, that, yeah, no, I didn't. The, the transfer station is a request that's been made before. The estimate for, for that project for building a new transfer station was five million.
Alright. Thank you, Miguel. No, you, you've done well, and, and that's all we really needed. So, I just wanted to drive home this point to my peers, we're gonna respect the leadership in my peers. And y'all gonna carry this forward. Actually, me and Madam Guider are actually the two that are actually on the same page. We just landed for different reasons, different approaches. Pay attention. I was one hundred public safety. Right, I put fifty points up for that. And spread the rest to, like, that was very intentional. But I knew that they could not coexist. When the sheriff asked that question, though, I wasn't gonna answer him then, I was gonna do it in my season. Right, they can't coexist. The sheriff and fire? The most y'all love fire and the sheriff and transportation? We're on the same page. I just use a different funding mechanism. I'm allowed, I can see in multiple dimensions, all y'all can. I did not harm this. Different approach. I don't have to do it that way. I'm a free thinker. So, Madam Chair, I'm not suggesting we change anything about what's on this agenda. I'm gonna yield the floor back, I made my point. You guys are gonna do a T-SPOS, whether I put a condition down or not, if y'all agree, y'all won't. But Madam Chair, move forward with your question, I'm good. I just, we, we did it, I put it out there, and so, call it.
Chairman, I make a motion that we table item number five until our next Commissioner's meeting in August. And if a T-SPOSH is to be included, it should have been included on the agenda, and we should have been, had, be given the opportunity to know what in the heck Miguel said in that fifteen-minute presentation, because that's the first we've heard of it. They just had a committee meeting. I, I tried to warn the, the chairman that she was giving her power away to the committees when we can self-appoint ourselves to committees instead of the chairman appointing us to it. But that's over the, that's water over the dam. But, um, this, we can't, I don't see how we can move forward with this with everything that's been presented here about a T-SPOSH, and it's not even on the agenda. So, and we have not vetted this. I would, I would venture to say I could ask anybody in this audience what all he said in his presentation, and they couldn't tell me what he said. Because when you hear something the first time, you got to be able to absorb it and have discussion about it. We have not had discussion about all this. We didn't know about it, all these funds supposedly coming down from other sources and everything. I was in meetings for nine hours yesterday. And so, we're limited, we are district leaders, and we're not supposed to be involved in everything that's going on, the chairman is. But the way it's done now, everything goes to the district leaders. But they look after just their districts. They just look after their districts. And if you look at this list that I got today of projects, you can see the bias in there. They threw District Four a bone. And I say that literally because they offered us a dog park at Clinton and a restroom at Clinton. And maybe, if there's funds left over in, in two thousand and twenty-five, maybe a senior center that we've been talking about, that was supposed, the, the one that was built under the two thousand and sixteen was supposed to have been in District Four. But that was taken away and put in another district. So, um, who knows what they're gonna do about moving these projects around? But the public needs to look at these projects. And why we would have a conceptual, money set aside for a conceptual new park in the Upper Winston Field, the oldest field in the county, by the way, and not have that on the list of projects to be funded. So, we're gonna draw, draw the park, but we're not gonna build it. So, we have not vetted this properly. And just throwing figures out there randomly without looking at the project list, we need to put this off and study it a little bit more. And I, I make the motion that we table it until our next meeting, until the August first meeting in August.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guider. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? The motion fails for lack of, of a second. Okay, with that being said, just want to clarify, we are not, we're voting on simply what I'm reading today, which is a resolution to place a referendum imposing a special purpose local option sales tax. I want to clear that for the record.
We're not doing the percentage.
You don't see anything located on here about percentages, so there's time. But certainly, I'm just gonna read what has, that has been presented. Board of Commissioners, do you want to say something?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, the proposed ordinance, which I think each of you have...
We can't hear.
Speak a little bit louder, speaking to your mic, we can't hear you.
Test.
There you go.
The proposed ordinance, which each of you, which is in your packet and you have a copy of, has blank spots for the percentages. So, and we could not fill those in because a vote hadn't been taken yet.
Because you needed us to discuss.
That's right.
Okay.
And so, once this is, this vote is taken, those percentages will be put into the blank box.
He said, once everything, once the vote is taken today, those percentages will be added to the referendum.
We could not ask, we could not add them previously because they hadn't been determined.
Okay.
Is that gonna be at a later date or tonight?
Tonight.
Tonight.
That's not on the agenda.
I think it is intended to be incorporated in item five, it doesn't specifically say percentages, but the form of ordinance does have the percentage blanks there. But you're right, it doesn't specifically say percentage to be inserted, but it should be inferred that those would be filled in once the board decides what those percentages are.
County turn to a point, point of order. In our past, maybe county clerk, in the past couple of meetings, I've, I've one who have shaped the agenda item for discussion, which was called, you know, we call it splosh or T-SPOS or splosh, as in plural, category and percentage finalization. So, this is not like this has not been messaged to the public, that we talked, we were working through this over the past two meetings. So, now, we're here with that. So, it's not like we had not, we, we had it yesterday. We said finalization. We discussed it yesterday in a public forum. We validated it at two different meetings, in which we did, Madam Guider was with me in the finance committee, to validate the percentages. And all we did was validate exactly what the board asked for. Nothing added, nothing changed. So, now, we, we put it back before you, just at the beginning of this meeting with, with Director Miller. So, again, what are y'all saying, we didn't do what about the percentages in? That's what this was all about, to clarify how we were gonna do this. So, I would say, okay, y'all get your questions answered, Madam Chair, call it, and we'll clarify for the record, Director Miller can read exactly what the full board get in waiting to make sure the numbers are right, and just up or down it. Just go for it.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the question board.
Madam Chair, wait a minute. I need to rebut what he said.
Okay, please, and you have...
We just certified that that's where the figures that was put out there by each thing. We didn't say they were right or wrong. We just certified those were the figures that each commissioner put out there. He put zero... He put zero for transportation.
And also, what we did at the, at the end, we averaged everybody's suggestions or percentages.
But he didn't have a, a figure for transportation.
Well, that's what he chose.
So divided by three.
Yeah, Commissioner, I understand. Okay, we're gonna call, I'm gonna call the question. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, Board Commissioners, certainly, do we have a motion to approve a resolution of the Board of Commissioners calling for a referendum imposing a one percent, one percent special purpose local option sales tax, which is a splosh, as authorized by the state of Georgia and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
As a point of clarity, I'd like to read into the record the average that was spoken by percentages, please. Director Miller, can you read those percentages?
Just read them once again, for us.
Categories and the percentages, the average rating one, just read them as they are, take your time, capture this, Deputy Clerk.
Category, public safety, forty point eight zero percent. Transportation, twenty seven point eight zero percent. Parks and Recreation slash Libraries, forty, I mean, twenty point four zero percent. Facilities, infrastructure, eleven percent.
Okay, thank you, that has been officially read into the record. I just wanna make one final point. Right, my vote can't be invalidated. I can go down the ballot, watch, skip a name. Please never confuse what election rights are. I'm not bound by anything, and you can't get rid of it. That's how this works. So I, Madam Chair, I just wanna make that statement, call it, you, you got your motion, your second, you got it, call it.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further discussion, Board, we have a motion and a second on the floor, please prepare to cast your votes. What did I?
No, no, I, I, we just ran into the, once we read this. Let's, let's ask, are there any questions or comments?
Oh, I, I did. I'm sorry, are there any additional questions?
Right, exactly. So just give me one second.
Okay, there you go.
I just wanna make sure I got the calculation right, make sure that, that did add up to be a hundred percent?
Yes.
With the four categories?
Yes.
Okay.
Just talking to the mic, so I can, maybe I can, I'm, I'm just trying to find myself to make sure that, because I, I think I understand Commissioner in the fourth district, her confusion is not knowing that, yes, this was already discussed, this was already discussed, that this was the process. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Legal, if we don't do it this time around, it'll be too late to do a splosh at our next meeting because we will be, the timeline wouldn't work, am I correct?
The, legally, we have under the law until August eighth or ninth. The reason it is expedited to this meeting is because Milton Kidd, the, the Elections Director, indicated that he wanted to get it early. It's certainly a possibility that we could talk to Mr. Kidd to see what early means to him.
No, 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 that's fine, I, I just, I, I, I'm saying that to say we had this conversation before as to why we moved it to this meeting a, a few meetings ago. I, I just, just wanted to be stated again to the fourth district Commissioner, so she, so she won't get confused as to kinda how we got here and how it moved so fast. Rosalyn, if you would, please, just for the record, so I can make sure I'm, I'm, I've got my math all together.
Can I approach?
Sure, yes, absolutely. All right, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Because when I made my statement yesterday, it was only surrounding around the three categories that we had initially. I get the fourth category that's been added, not a problem. And I guess you took all of our numbers and came up with these averages as to what we, we kinda sorta did. And I'm glad to hear that Parks and Rec came up to twenty point something, I think it was, oh, twenty point four, right. Twenty point forty.
Twenty point four.
Twenty point forty.
Twenty point four.
Percent, okay, okay, not a problem. All righty, okay, Madam Chair, I guess I'll yield, I don't think I've got anything else. But I just wanted that for clarity, but thank you, Legal, for at least kinda clarifying why. And, and this particular motion is strictly, and I'm not talking to you, I'm sorry, you're fine.
You're just looking at me, but no, okay.
This, this particular motion and second is in reference to a splosh, nothing to do with a T-splosh.
Splosh.
Correct.
I'm just looking for clarity, so I wanna make sure that the general public understand that we're only voting for the percentages that we will put within the categories of a splosh and, and put the ballot on there, and we'll work on the projects down the road. There's no, there are no projects within this, these categories other than what we would like to see and adjust when we get to the categories of if the splosh, and I'm not, that's not a question for you, but even if it pass, when it passes, then we'll look at the projects. Am I correct in where we're going with that, correct? Okay, all right, I yield, just for clarity, thank you very much, I want, and I yield. Thank you, Rosalyn, thank you.
Attorney Coleman, I believe you had something.
Just, just to clarify again, that the, the will of the Board will be that in approving the resolution, you are approving the use of the percentages that, that come out of the average. That is the, that's what I understand to be the case, but I just wanna make sure that's the, the clarity on that.
And what will be, that will, that's, this is what will be added on the ballot as a referendum?
Correct.
With these numbers and the, the language that you put together legally for, for the ballot.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine, not a problem, yes.
Okay, all cards and minds are clear.
And I, and I yield, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Board of Commissioners, we have a motion and a second on the table, please prepare to cast your electronic votes. We have a four-one vote and the motion carries. Okay, Board of Commissioners.
No, it was an abstain.
Oh, abstain, I'm sorry, I couldn't see. I apologize, I apologize, let me clarify for the record. It was four yeses and one abstain. I didn't, ooh, my glasses played tricks on me, Lisa, but thank you, I couldn't see it, I was trying to look up on the screens. Board of Commissioners, we're gonna move right into our consent agenda, and please keep in mind that all items are subject to final legal review. We're gonna start with tab number six, Authorization to amend the ACCG Retirement Services Defined Benefit Plan and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Tab number seven, authorize the chairman to execute an employee contract with Ramona Vivins as chief financial officer. Tab number eight, approval of an intergovernmental agreement for the use and distribution of proceeds from the two thousand twenty-two special purpose local, local option sales tax, which is splosh, for capital outlay projects between Douglas County, City of Osdale, City of Douglasville, and the City of Villarica, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Tab number nine is Authorization to accept a grant in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred dollars from the BGA, BJA Adult Drug Court Discretionary Grant Program with a local match of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars to be funded through existing budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Tab number ten is Authorization to apply for the BJA-FY two thousand twenty-two Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, local solicitation in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred forty-three dollars, no match requirement, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Tab number eleven, Authorization to accept the FYC-JCC Juvenile Justice Incentive Grant in the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars with no match required to be used to support evidence-based programs for medium and high-risk youth educated in juvenile court. Amend the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Tab number twelve, Approval to Accept the First Amendment Aging Subgrant Agreement with Atlanta Regional Commission in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars with a local match of thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars to be funded through existing budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Tab number thirteen, Authorization for Douglas County Sheriff's Office to accept FY two thousand twenty-two SCAAP, which is State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, funds in the amount of thirty-four thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Tab number fourteen, Authorization for Douglas County Sheriff's Office to renew Administrative Solutions, Inc. and Stop Loss Insurance Agreement with HCC Life Insurance and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Tab number fifteen, Authorize the Chairman to Execute An Employee Contract with Charmaine Dupree as a part-time temporary legal assistance, assistant in the Solicitor General's Office. Tab number sixteen, Authorization to amend the two thousand twenty-two General Fund Budget to the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for salary adjustments per Georgia Code Section forty-five dash seven four and local legislation and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Tab number seventeen, Approval of Change Order Number Two in the amount of eight thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-one cents on the Maxim Road Sidewalk Project Contract with the Corporate Group LLC to be funded from the two thousand sixteen splosh funds allocated to the project and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Tab number eighteen, Approval of Change Order Number One in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars on the contract with CSM, I'm sorry, CMES, Inc. for construction of the Lee Road Widening Project P one zero 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 four four two eight to be funded from the two thousand sixteen splosh funds allocated to the project and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Tab number nineteen, Approval of First Amendment on the contract with Central Square Technologies LLC for the Computer-Aided Dispatch CAD Upgrade Project, revising the payment schedule to reflect the revised due date of on or before October two thousand twenty-two of ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the Douglas County E nine one one and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for Douglas County Fire and EMS for a total of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars due to delay a projected go-live date of the system and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents subject to final legal review. Tab number twenty, Authorization to Award Contracts For the Douglas County Financial and Entrepreneurship Program with Teal Marketing in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Media Miracle in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, and Lionheart Consulting, Consulting in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Tab number twenty-one, Authorization for the County Attorney to Engage Turner, Ross, and Jermaine as attorneys for the Tax Assessor's Office, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. And finally, tab number twenty-two, Authorization to Award On-Demand Professional Consulting Services Contract Extensions to the Firms of Atkins, Michael Baker International, Alfred Venish and Company, AE Com, Pon and Company, R S and H Incorporated, V and M Consulting Engineers, GCA and KCI, BM and K, and GPI Geospatial, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Board of Commissioners, that concludes our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So would.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Board of Commissioners, any discussion on any particular item? Okay, no discussion. Board of Commissioners, I would, I have one and certainly would like our Ramona Vivins. Ms. Vivins, if you could just come to the front, certainly wanted to introduce the Board of Commissioners to you and vice versa, and certainly just wanted to see if they had any questions for you. First of all, good evening, and thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here.
Okay, could you just, just say a little, you know, get, tell us a few things about you and tell us why you're here and tell us what you plan to do for Douglas County?
Yes, ma'am, again, I'm Ramona Vivins. I am a candidate for the CFO position with Douglas County. I have over twenty-five years of experience in governmental accounting. My last position was with Clayton County as a CFO for a little over nine years. Prior to that, I worked as the Budget Director for Atlanta Public Schools, Clayton County Public Schools, and had other management positions over my career. I'm excited about the opportunity to come and work with Douglas County and help you guys move forward.
Okay, if you could just have a seat right there, the Board might have some questions once I finish everything. I just wanna, but thank you for the brief introduction. Board, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Board, please prepare to cast your votes tonight for the consent agenda. Board, we have a five-o unanimous vote and the motion carries. So thank you, that concludes our consent agenda, and certainly, Ms. Vivins, if you could come back to the podium and just wanted to certainly, if the Board had some questions for you or comments, or just to welcome your Board, but thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Board of Commissioners, anyone have any comment? I know our committee chair of finance may have someone in our vice chair, Commissioner Guyder, may have a question for you. Just comments, you have the floor, Vice Chair.
Okay, I, I had to wait permission. Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
And I guess congratulations.
Thank you.
Your, your onboard. You know, obviously, the county is in transition, where financial maturity is important to us, new leadership, and we're looking forward to you coming in. We know you gotta take time to come in and assess your operations, get to feel for the Board. You know, obviously, as the CFO, there's a direct line reporting per se into the administration, but of course, as the CFO, you're writing to the Board. So you and I will get to know each other as far as how, you're gonna do your job, but there's things that we need. And I look forward to working with you and you helping shape us, and we appreciate who you are and why you're here. Also, I do have to acknowledge Terminus and, and, and our Director of Finance, Ms. Rosalyn Miller. You have been in here for what, eighteen months, and you've just really held it down for us as we figured out which way we wanted to go. We appreciate you guys, you guys have been yeoman, David Corbin, our financial advisor, so we appreciate those guys. Please don't get this twisted, we needed somebody who was formal in that particular role, but as our advisors, our consultant, you guys were yeoman, you helped us through some tough times, played many roles. So I wanna acknowledge them, but again, back to you, now it's all yours. And so we look forward to you helping us down the lane, that's all I gotta say, Madam Chair, I'm good, thank you. We're talking.
Thank you. Commissioner Guyder, you have any comments, as the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, and then we're gonna move on if there are no other comments.
I talked to you on the telephone, I was very impressed by your credentials and everything. I had looked forward to working with you, but I'm resigning from the Finance Committee as of today. So I won't be working as closely with you as I had hoped to. But anyway, welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments, Commissioner Carter, you have the floor, and thank you, Commissioner Guyder.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Thank you for taking the time to apply. I know this is not an easy job, and you just sat through just a tidbit of what goes on here in Douglas County. So I know Ms. Miller is probably gonna give you an earful now that, now that she can hand the reins over. But I just want to say, at any time, if you have any questions, my door is always open, I welcome you. But I just want to say, at any time, if you have any questions, my door is always open. I welcome you. I hope that you can bring, you know, good processes, a better way to do things. We are open and receptive, and at least I know I am, to what experience you bring to make us better as a county. So, again, welcome, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Commissioner, likewise.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner Carthian. And again, thank you, Mrs. Vivins, for being here. And good things come to those who wait, and we waited, and you're here. And this is the first time in my lifetime I've had another Ramona among me. So, thank you to Ramona.
Welcome. I have to say, I'm Ramona with an A, though.
Yeah, I told her, I said, she's an A and I'm an O.
Yes.
So, all right, well, welcome again.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Board of Commissioners, we're going to move right into the approval of our minutes. You've had an opportunity to review, I mean, I'm sorry, approve expenses. We're going to move right into our expenses. Board of Commissioners, Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve our expenses?
Motion to approve expenses.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Board? We have a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, please prepare to cast your electronic votes. There we go. Board of Commissioners, we have a five-o unanimous vote and the motion carries. We're going to move right into our announcements, and certainly want to yield to the Board if you have any announcements. Certainly, this is your time. Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, as an announcement, I'm sure, I thought this meeting would have been quicker. I could have announced the Anoaki H.O.A., but I'm sure we've blown past that. Nevertheless, as relates to District Two, I will be in Denver, Colorado, attending a conference, the National Association of County Officials, soon. And so, just FYI, we go there and get educated on a federal level. I look work for it. Meet my colleagues from Ohio and California and all over this nation as we make, make a difference on federal policy. That's all, Madam Chair, I yield for.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements, Board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Carthian, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd just like to invite the public. On Saturday, July 30th, District Three will be hosting a pet vaccination clinic. This will be our second one. The last one was well-attended. We had people around the building, and so, we figured there must be a need. So, we have extended it. Again, it will be Saturday, July 30th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. It will be held at the Douglasville First United Methodist Church. You do not have to register. However, we are asking that the pets that you bring out, your fur babies, please make sure they are 12 weeks of age or older so that we can give them their rabies shots. And they will also be, the ability to get them tagged, so if ever they're lost, chipped, then with the chip, they can be found. So, please come out and receive those services if you have dogs or cats that you would like to have rabies shots for and chips. I yield, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthian. Commissioner Mitchell?
And I'm going to pass, pass it over to my legislative aide, and she's going to come up and actually do the three announcements for District One. So, thank you.
I love Commissioner Mitchell. He says she's coming up.
Hello, Board. How y'all doing today? So, really quick, Commissioner Mitchell has several events coming up. The first event we have is the Back to School Drive, where he'll be partnering with local other organizations within the community. That will be this Sunday, July 24th. The hours is from 1:00 to 4:00. And it will be at You Got Next Barber Shop. The address is 2121 Fairbend Road, Douglasville, Georgia, and it is first come, first served. The next event is Coffee and Conversation, which will be held August the 6th at Blue Rose Art Bistro, and that's at 12:00, 4:41 Veterans Memorial Highway, Douglasville, Georgia. And then the final event is August the 20th, which is also the Pet Vaccination Drive, and that will be hosted actually at the Douglasville Animal Shelter, which is located at 2171 Mack Road, Douglasville, Georgia. And that's August the 20th from 8:00 to 12:00. And of course, Coffee and Conversation is from 10:00 to 12:00 as always. Thank you.
Thank you, and we yield back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. All right.
District Four.
Yeah.
Yes, I want to invite the public to, on the 29th, which is a Friday, at 10:00 o'clock in the morning, we're going to be inaugurating our new bumper truck at Connors Road Fire Station. That's considered the Mirror Lake Fire Station. I will be hosting it. There will be some refreshments. My pastor will be doing the invocation, and Louis Schaefer will be singing the anthem. And if you haven't heard him, he's, he's been on TV before. So, he, he's coming all the way from Kentucky off of a mission trip just to sing for that. So, y'all come out, and I've got 42 towels that I've acquired out of my pocket. I don't charge it to the county, by the way. But anyway, we're going to be wet, wetting it down and then rolling it out, and then we're drying it up. So, y'all come out. We will just make a fun day of it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Guyer. I was going to ask you, what was his name again? Louis Schaefer?
Louis Schaefer. She, he sang, he was on Fox News one time because he sang, he sings two verses, two sentences of the National Anthem, the first and the last, and he's got a beautiful a cappella voice.
Okay, I'll be there. All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyer. Rick Martin, you ready for the remainder of the announcements?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes.
Martin is our Director of Communications, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, good evening, Board of Commissioners, staff. Last remaining announcements that we have, on behalf of Chairwoman Dr. Ramona Jackson-Jones, the public is invited to attend a virtual town hall meeting regarding COVID-19 with special guests Dr. Janet Memark, District Director of Cobb and Douglas Public Health, and Deputy Director Lisa Crossman of Cobb and Douglas Public Health as well. Citizens can watch the virtual town hall on Douglas County Happenings Facebook page. It's happening on Tuesday, July 26th at 6:30 p.m. They'll also be able to watch live on YouTube, our YouTube channel, DCTV23 YouTube channel as well. Keep Douglas County Beautiful will be hosting their second Junk Dump Event here at the Courthouse on Saturday, August 6th. The first one was a big hit, beginning at 8:00 a.m. sharp. The event is for county, city residents, and county employees only. Please note dumping is on a first-come, first-served basis. No residents or employees will be allowed to dump once the dumpsters are completely full. Prohibited items are tires, mattresses, concrete, and paint. More information can be found on CelebrateDouglasCounty.com, our website. Connect Douglas, Douglas County's fixed road bus service is offering free rides through September 3rd. Just a reminder to all citizens and staff, free rides through September 3rd. And free COVID-19 testing is still being offered at Derelict Park, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more information, you can visit DouglasVillcovid.com. I yield back to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Martin. Well, Board of Commissioners, thank you so much. We had a very productive legislative meeting, voting meeting tonight. Again, I just want to remind our citizens to be aware that we are still in high status here in Douglas County with the COVID-19, and I am asking you to manage your own care. And when I say that, make sure if you're in a crowded space or confined area that you wear masks. I would, I just recommend that you do so. Wash your hands repeatedly throughout the day, and I encourage you to certainly consider the vaccines and watch your social distancing. So, Board of Commissioners, certainly, again, our citizens, I want you to just be aware, and I'm going to say it again, and I was getting ready to pivot, pivot to the Board of Commissioners, but I want to just appeal to the citizens again. We have the BA4 and 5 subvariant to the Omicron variant, I mean, to the virus, and it is one that is extremely contagious. So, please, just if you could just mitigate some of your activities and take precaution and make sure that your safety measures are in place. Board of Commissioners, thank you again tonight. Appreciate your time and talent. And with that being, if there's nothing else to come before this body, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.